The United States of America. One nation, the land of God, in the digital. The liberty of justice for all.
Here, please, I have business and public comment, and we'll take first to the room and define for people to address the commissioners. If there is comment, I'll read the rules. Anybody in the room want to give a comment? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to give a comment at this time? Please raise your hand. See anybody? Okay, move on. Consideration adoption of agenda?
In June, ma'am? Uh, not at this time, no. I'll move for, well, the agenda is presented.
Second.
Moving second, the discussion on favor.
Aye.
On the polls, when she's ready. Okay, there's the department reports, folks, what a report, Bobby Childers, and I see them on the line.
She had mentioned about coming over, so I would just ask her for consideration if she does come in.
Floating hole. Uh, local public safety coordinator accounts reported Jessica. Floating hole two, I guess. Public Works monthly report, Eric.
Good morning, commissioners.
Mark, good morning. During the month of May, entire month of May, road crew spent pretty much all of their time up on Liberty School, uh, getting that project ready for, for paving. Um, all the, the sloping is, is completed, all the drainage is done, signs are in place, and the paving is actually done now, too. We got all that done, um, the last, this last week and the week before, and finished the intersection at Ray Creek, uh, yesterday. So, the last portion of that is the seal, which will happen, uh, the last third or fourth week of June. I'll report on that then. But, uh, yeah, we pretty much spent, uh, our entire time up there getting that done. I'll report this month that we have had, um, no signs missing and no damage. So I appreciate you guys letting me report on that because it seems to be working. It's helping a lot, so.
So, since it seems to be working, can you remind us how much it saves the county to not have signs stolen with those taxpayers?
Yeah, so the, I need to, I need to separate damage from, uh, theft, but this year we've spent thirty, we will have spent thirty thousand dollars on signs alone, and that does not include labor. So, yes, it is very, very expensive. And we have the accidentals, but, you know, that's to be understood, expected, so. For the airport, um, we're in full swing for phase two of the, uh, Pappy reconstruction project. We've successfully completed the independent fee estimate and submitted all required documentation to the FAA, FAA, excuse me. Uh, next steps to initiate the design phase, and our surveyor will visit the site to identify a new location for the Pappy, uh, the Pappy system, which is a precision approach path indicator for anyone that doesn't know. Once the survey-
Yes, you bet.
Um, once, uh, the survey's complete, our engineering team will move forward with assembling the remainder of the design. And this current contract will take us through the bidding phase. Construction is anticipated to occur under a separate, separate contract in twenty twenty-six. Uh, weeds, Cory's, uh, sprayed out, uh, pretty much all the gravel road system. Uh, he's been working a lot with, uh, landowners as the A-list weeds are popping up around the county. Um, uh, he's doing, communicating well with landowners. And also busy still with, uh, development, uh, projects, and he'll report on that as he does monthly. With solid waste, we continue to make progress across our solid waste operations. Coordination with DEQ on the Recycling Modernization Act remains ongoing. In the coming months, we will work closely with the Contract Coordinating Agency Group to ensure readiness for Morro County's participation in the statewide program, uh, which begins July first, twenty twenty-five. Um, we've had a position open, uh, um, Rose has reported, um, that there is a position open, but it has been filled as of last week, so we will have a, a, a new attendant up north. Are there any questions regarding public works?
The transfer station. Are you guys listening here? There, I've got like five people else. Charging? Scale change?
It, it has not changed, um. I would say that we've had some issues at the, the transfer stations following the guidelines. So we, we charge by the cubic foot, and we have that guide. So of trying to get attendance, uh, following that guide closer, so it would probably feel as though it has changed. Um, I, I would say we're probably, um, not charging enough, uh, not following the, the rates.
I would agree with that assessment.
Okay.
Not that I complain about it personally, but I would agree with that assessment.
That we will manage that better moving forward, sure.
So, how far are we from getting the scales operation?
Uh, the north scale, um, we can have that up and running in July. The south scale, as we've reported, um, we have some more work to do that's, um, budgeted for next fiscal year, and so we're just waiting for that, uh, and would also be in July.
This then will start charging by the time which is out in the churches.
You'd be correct, yes. Be a lot.
Also, I got a question. So then, Eric, were you talking about the fees for the transfer station?
Yes.
So I, I went down there last weekend, I had a, a six-by-twelve trailer, and I had some bags of leaves, um, a few limbs of my trailer, so a six-by-twelve trailer, and it was sixty-five bucks. And I think if I were taking that same load to Philly View, it'd have been like twenty bucks. I don't remember it being that high of a charge ever before.
Um, did you ask to see the, 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 the scale? He, there, there should be, uh, the fee schedule there at the transportation. That sounds very expensive.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we need to tighten that up, so. I think having, having it, uh, the way it is without a scale is part of the reason why we're putting a scale in. Just is very difficult to get accurate and consistent charges.
I saw the scale, it looks nice, so.
Isn't it nice sitting there? We need to get on.
Need to get on.
Literally get.
He's operating.
Yes. Yeah, we'll be working on that in July again. Um, I, I think I will report as well, um, this came up just last week, so we get it in the report. Um, Paul Smith up in Boardman, you know, we've been paving, the road department's been paving those half-mile roads a couple of years. Um, they've been neglected for a long, long time. Um, there's one that's in really bad shape that, uh, is Paul, the section of Paul Smith between Coonsy and the canal. We've been throwing patches at that for years, um, in anticipation of the irrigation line being put underneath there, and that is all happening. We're having those meetings, um, with all the utilities that are involved, so when we pave it, it stays paved and not cut again. The unfortunate part, we've been waiting, waiting, waiting. I've threatened to pave it anyway, just keep waiting, so that section road's in terrible shape. Um, we, we are gonna go out and put some patches in there. Um, talked to a property owner there this morning. Um, so I just wanted to report on that, too. It is, it is a bad section, we know it. Um, we think, uh, October timeframe, that project's gonna begin, so it will go to gravel, and it will stay gravel until that project is done, and we'll, we'll pave it after that, so. Just wanted to report on that.
So the October meeting, that's when most extensions are going to run the lateral down?
Correct. Yeah.
And so you don't want to put in a brand-new road and have it torn up in that amount of time?
No.
No, you don't care?
That's, that's more embarrassing and bad fees at the transfer station, that's.
Yeah.
So. I don't want to do that. Um, yeah, that's all I have to report. If there's any more questions, okay, thanks, commissioners.
Okay, I see Jessica's here, um. So Jessica, you want to go and give your report? Keep in ears.
Hi, yeah, I'm just waiting to.
Yeah, go ahead. We, uh, we're ready to hear your report.
Oh, okay, um, I can't get my camera to show. Yeah, um, so for, uh, the Lipstick, we currently have a lot of grant activity going on because this is grant season. Um, interestingly, oh, here's my video. Interestingly, um, and it's the same with all of our agencies, the agenda or the budget tends to come out after we've actually been required to submit our budget. So we're basically submitting our budgets as though everything will stay the same, and we're in the hopes that that's the case. I am anticipating some changes to the way the state issues their public safety grants. I think they're trying to streamline things and um, have everything in one big bucket, and you apply as a county for what you need instead of piecemeal grants that you apply for, and a lot of them end up being kind of similar. Um, so that'll be a really big difference, um, that we haven't seen since I've been doing this in ten years. Um, so I'm hoping to see how that works. And we're also working on a welcome brochure. We're seeing a really high increase in DUIs, um, even since before COVID. So, we're trying to figure out how we might be able, be able to address that with, uh, kind of public messaging and education. Um, and the welcome brochure would be for people who come here from out of the country, who may not be aware of certain rules and laws that we have if they're not the same where they're from. Um, so we're working on how to develop something like that, um, that might be helpful. And, yeah, we're just still working on the same grants, and, uh, they've extended those to December since a lot of them are gonna be completely reorganized, we think. If, um, if a House bill that's before the Senate passes, which we anticipate, it's supposed to pass, they, they're saying it will. So that's all I have.
Got any, commissioners have any questions to Jessica?
No.
Uh, when does Lipstick meet, you, and your report, you said every other month, um, but not when, every other month?
Every other month on the last Tuesday of the month, so, um, I don't have my phone right here by me. Our next meeting is in July. I want to say, let's see, let me put my calendar up. It would be July twenty-ninth, um, and then in September. And we try to meet every other month, we meet either at the Port of Boardman or in Hepner, in the room you're in, I think. So, we switch it up just so people at each end of the county can attend. Um, we also have a Zoom link, so anyone can attend any meeting by Zoom if they're interested, and I can get that to you if you'd like.
Uh, I would like that, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Jessica? All right, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, bye-bye.
All right. Uh, next up would be our finance report, that's the written report. Um, and then next goes our county administration report now.
Yeah, as far as, uh, the county administrator, the written reports is there, I just want to, uh, highlight a, a couple items, um. They went up to the parks, uh, with Vincent, uh, last, uh, Friday and and toured them, the parks, we've got a concession area up there, if you haven't, up there, they do put on a really good, uh, good show on there. Are just going into that service, uh, in incredible way. We're looking to see how we can advertise that a little bit better on, on our parks website and where you register and that, because they're just going above and beyond what, uh, previous concessionaires have been doing. Um, they had a successful fishing derby this last weekend, and, uh, they're just, it's a beautiful, beautiful place to get away from, from the lowlands a little. So, um, but as, as we went through, we've been keeping an eye on a lot of legislation, we haven't seen anything move on HB twenty-seven, twenty-five, which goes with SIPs and ports. Um, eleven fifty-four, SB eleven fifty-four with, uh, new water regulation, while we have a presentation on that from Matamora. This session, we're just keeping a close eye on that as it, um, it moves and changes. The fair board, uh, from our discussions during the special session, we do have that RFP out for the sheep shelter, and, uh, we'll be closing that, uh, next week. And, uh, we do have the strategic plan, uh, town, uh, town halls scheduled for the tenth and eleventh, the tenth is up in Boardman, the eleventh is down here in Hepner. Um, and then we'll be having, uh, the, uh, the committee be on the twelfth and kind of summarize feedback from the town halls, the surveys and everything. We've been, uh, getting word out, there's been a, uh, a flyer, hopefully you've seen it in your email, just to remind everybody to do that survey. Uh, we'd love to have the feedback, and, uh, that's part of the committee's, uh, responses to kind of weed through that feedback and, and, and take the kernels so that, that'll help us to project. Uh, we don't have a set time for the, uh, for the follow-up, that should be after Fourth of July time period. Uh, should have that kind of figured out in, in the next week, and we'll be engaging with the commission on that to finalize that date on the eighteenth. Um, and so we're excited about that. We have received some good feedback in previous town halls, and, um, uh, I haven't seen the results from the surveys. When initially went out, we had a nice little burst of people, and we've got a lot of surveys back from years and that, uh, from their luncheon, so, uh, we're, and we're anxious to see what that is and what kind of, uh, direction that gives to this body to consider as far as our strategic approach for the next, uh, three to five years. Um, nitrate waters, we're still working through that. Uh, we did have to, uh, move the clean, clean water consortium meeting to next Tuesday. Um, and, uh, wrapped up my, uh, county college and such, and looking forward to finishing that up next month. It's been a great experience, but I'm about ready not to attempt to save them once a month, so, uh, so it's, uh, we're doing fairly good on those things. Uh, with that, there's the written report, any questions from the commission?
No, you guys have any questions?
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much. All right, next up, so consent, agenda, any of those items, the committee commissioners want to pull out and discuss?
You don't think this is?
Okay, I'll let, number two, motion, please.
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented, second.
Moving second through the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Fellas, motion, very, okay, business items. Okay. Do, do we want to move Sheriff absolutely his?
Yeah.
You guys have any option?
No.
Okay. John? You, you, uh, moving you up first on our business and then your staff and we can go. Unless you want to hang out with us.
Oh, they're not ready yet.
As long as Scott Hayes on here is ready to go, it looks like he might be.
You guys are busy.
Yeah, we can go ahead and do that if you want to do that.
Okay, so just so everybody knows, he up to right now, some of West accreditation's line presentation.
Yeah. Let me just go. There he is.
Would you like me to jump in?
Go ahead, Scott, you got the floor.
Good, good morning, commissioners, and members of, uh, the community that are viewing. I am Scott Hayes, the executive director of the Northwest Accreditation Alliance. I appreciate the opportunity to address the commission and present the Morro County Sheriff's Office and Morro County Sheriff's Office nine-one-one Communication Center with their second accreditation award under the leadership of Sheriff John Bowles. Law enforcement is experiencing a changing society with increased demands for police accountability and transparency. As in our past, our profession must face these challenges and work with our communities to address their concerns. Accreditation is one step towards building community trust in the legitimacy of our profession. The Northwest Accreditation Alliance was formed under the direction of the Oregon State Sheriff's Association, the Oregon Association of Chiefs of Police, and the Association of Public Safety Communication Officials, and provide accreditation services to over a hundred and fifteen law enforcement and communication centers in Oregon. Accreditation goals are straightforward. They are to support the continued improvement of law enforcement services to establish best practices through professional standards to promote the agency accountability and transparency, and to enhance, uh, operational management. To become accredited, the Morro County Sheriff's Office had to adhere to a hundred and ten law enforcement standards, and nine-one, one communication centers had to adhere to fifty-six standards. Compliance is generally in the form of policies and procedures adherence to Oregon revised statutes, Oregon administrative rules, city policy, and the Department of Public Safety and Standards training requirements. Our standards are established through best practice nationally and through changes in federal and Oregon law. In addition to each standard, the agency must also demonstrate proof of compliance to ensure that it is following established policies and current best practice. Then re-accred, re-accreditation occurs every three years. This is really a monumental step for any agency to be evaluated by an outside independent organization and have its policies and procedures scrutinized. I'm aware that several members have been involved in the process, but I would still like to acknowledge the efforts of Lieutenant Kristen Bowles, um, the accreditation manager, who worked diligently to prepare the agency for the review for both law enforcement and the communications assessment. It's quite the task to take on. Sheriff Bowles, uh, on behalf of the Northwest Accreditation Alliance and our Board of Directors, I would like to congratulate you on receiving your second accreditation aw, award for law enforcement and your communication centers. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that, and congratulations, uh, John, you can take all the credit, huh?
No.
You got a presentation?
I don't know if you've seen these at the sheriff's office, so these are what the accreditation look like here. If you'd like to take a look at them.
To get a picture.
Okay.
Of whoever you want to have photo.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to have him in the background there. Valerie, you gonna be able to? Okay. All right, maybe you guys want to stand over here?
You want a, a couple commissioners want to jump in here?
Take the blur. County's running good, this is a good thing.
Few different angles. Okay, I think that's good.
Very good. It's good.
I'm very excited.
I'll just add a couple things on that real quick. So this is the accomplishment for any law enforcement agency, and, uh, so I started this project actually, actually back in two thousand sixteen. We went to a class, Chris and I went to a class at, uh, the Police Academy to learn about accreditation and everything like that. So we got the, the, uh, how-tos, um, at that class, and then we started working on it. And when we got into it, boy, it's a lot of work. You know, we knew right off the bat it was gonna be a lot of work, a lot of time. At the beginning, Chris and I just put a lot of time in, in putting this all together and, and getting this going forward, and then it came out to a lot of policy and procedures, you know, we had to write and get in place and stuff like that. And so we actually got everything completed and approved, and so we were given our initial accreditation in two thousand twenty-two. But then the big challenge, okay, after you got everything in place, now you got to maintain and keep all the reporting and requirements for that three years. So when the re-accreditation come up, you, you have all this proof that you've been following all these rules and regulations and policies for that three-year period. Um, so overall, it's just a lot of work, and, uh, for me, just writing policy, whatever, to me, that's small, but it's, it's to the office, following all that policy and procedures and, and reports and all that through the three years, that's the big part of the work, so it, it's more on my agency and my team, not me, so all the credit goes to them, so. It's a big deal.
Well, congratulations, and I think it's great that, um, you know, it shows a level of professionalism in the department to have the policies, and then especially like here emphasizing actually following the policies. It's one thing, that's a rule, I mean, that's saying.
They have proof that they were following.
Right.
So I think, I think that's great.
That's all we have, so.
Okay, well, on behalf of the commission and staff and everyone, congratulations and thank you for doing, being here to tell us about it.
Man, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you.
Have a good one, Scott.
Thanks, sir.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, this is, uh, so the IT services agreement that, intergovernmental agreement that we have with the City of Hermiston, um, is expiring at the end of this fiscal year on June thirtieth, um, and this is just a renewal, and it reflects the, uh, CPI-based price increase for coming year. We're only recommending a one-year renewal. The Business Continuity and Disaster Recovery Plan project that we went through, uh, this last year uh, identified a number of things that we probably need to incorporate into the contract, um, just from a best practices, um, standpoint. But, um, we haven't had the resources to put towards rewriting that and updating that contract, so we're basically, uh, just recommending that we put it in, yeah, renew it for one year, and then over the next twelve months, we'll, uh, work on, uh, refining and improving that.
Yeah, I was wondering about that, I know. Personally, I, yeah, but they've been, they've been awesome, it's just good. You know?
I agree with that.
Yeah. Personally, I work on the big things like you do, but.
Now, they, they've, uh, been really fantastic service, and I can tell you that we certainly couldn't have our own, uh, IT department for the cost of that contract, so, um, the, the counties received a tremendous amount of value.
I got one question I was thinking of, and you've probably addressed this before, the CRP, is that totally cloud-based, or is there any, uh, will any, any of the system be on their servers?
Um, so we're still working through the statement of work, what that's gonna look like, but I believe everything is cloud-based. Uh, which, you know, there's no server administration, uh, you know, to, 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 to deal with, but then there's, you know, a plethora of, of se, security and network issues that we manage, so.
They own, they own their own servers and our mail servers, and everything is on theirs. They don't, they only, they, they rent cloud space as I.
Oh, are you, you're talking about the, the vendors?
Our contract.
Yeah. Yeah.
Own their own servers.
Yeah, well, it, it, it depends. Um, so I, I believe, I, I would have to find out what, what Tyler Tech does. Most of them actually contract with like Amazon Web Services or another, uh, service provider, just and, and they actually own the physical service, and they essentially lease space on those servers, which is a much more cost-effective model because they can build in redundancy through the network that their data serves.
Nothing matters, I just was curious how, what, what, uh, the trend that we see people doing is most people, most stuff's going online, people aren't maintaining their own, so.
Yeah, I think that's definitely the trend. Um, even the vendors are, are leasing space just because it's more, it's more cost-effective, um, for them to do it, but I don't want to say, make a blanket statement, say that's the case, because I'm, I'm sure there's some out there that still have their own small data centers and own their own servers.
I think time and security would be an issue, too.
And that's one of the benefits.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, I'll move to approve the renewal of the annual monthly, uh, at the City of Hermiston.
I'll move to approve the renewal of the annual monthly at the City of Hermiston for ongoing IT services and authorize the county administrator. Any second.
Any second, and then for the discussion. All in favor?
Aye, aye. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Resolution for being in the state of Oregon to defer compensation on our dash. There, there it is. There she is. Oh, there's one.
We're on a quick pace today. I've been shooting at texts.
I've heard it coming. Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
Sorry to keep you waiting. Um, okay, so today I'm presenting Resolution R two thousand twenty-five, uh, zero five, which would authorize, um, Morrow County to participate in the Oregon Savings Growth Plan, uh, which is also known as OSGP. It's a voluntary deferred comp program administered by, um, Oregon PERS that would allow employees to contribute a portion of their wages to a tax-deferred retirement savings account. Um, so the participation in the program is optional for employees and it comes at no cost to the county. Um, but it would offer another option for our staff to, uh, save for retirement as we switch to PERS effective seven one.
Yeah, I mean, I see like no drawbacks to that, so it's very straightforward to me.
Any other questions?
I move to approve Resolution R dash two thousand twenty-five dash zero five, authorize in Morrow County's participation in the Oregon Savings Growth Plan, a voluntary deferred compensation program administered by the State of Oregon, and to authorize this necessary payroll deductions and administrative coordination to implement the plan. Second.
The move is secondly for the discussion.
Aye, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just before Lindsay goes off, with the transition to PERS, um, we do have, this does impact about forty employees. Uh, with this action, uh, Lindsay will be sending out notifications to all impacted employees and thirty of you are some of those. Um, and so we'll be getting that and having that roll over this, this all takes effect July first. So as far as, uh, with the defined contribution, this base item will be, uh, you'll get notification and all the others will. So just want to let the BOC note will be Lindsay's spearheading that for us.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just to clarify that one too, the deferred comp though is available to all employees, not just, um,
Yes.
Those on PERS.
Okay, uh, next up would be.
Good morning. Took me a minute to find my, find the right button. Um, yeah, thank you, commissioners. Um, I submitted this for the, for the docket, but, uh, worked in consultation with, uh, Commissioner Peterson and our administrator, Matt Jensen. Um, lots of legislation in this session, as you know. You also know that we've been deeply involved with a lot of water quality issues over the past, uh, four years. Um, this particular bill, um, Senate Bill eleven fifty-four was, um, um, legislation submitted by Governor Kotek, and it was originally a hundred pages long, and I think it's down to about, um, forty-five pages now. And since its, um, original, um, hearings, um, it has had a technical work group and I have not been involved with it. There have been lots of really smart subject matter experts involved in it and, um, from various industries, from municipalities, um, food processors, farmers, um, environmental groups, et cetera. But I did take a look at, um, the more recent version and that's attached to your packet. It does say confidential and that was distributed. I think we're now, um, part of that confidential working group, which is obviously no longer confidential. Um, uh, let's see, a week and a half ago, Commissioner Peterson and Matt Jensen and I had a call with the lead governor's staff on this, had some questions and some comments and then, um, I just put those in a letter for you. And while at the moment this new bill would not directly affect the Lower Yuma-Tilla Basin groundwater management area, the La Guama, it could, as you know how legislation changes. Um, plus a lot of what this bill is doing, um, with regard to state agencies and how they would organize and collaborate around a new groundwater designation is what, um, the governor's staff and the state agencies, uh, started about a year and a half ago in the, in the Lower Yuma-Tilla Basin. Um, believe it or not, before that effort began about eighteen months ago, those state agencies were not necessarily involved. Um, and before Morrow County declared a drinking water emergency, Oregon Health Authority wasn't involved in the groundwater management area. So this memorializes various roles of state agencies, which is also why it's so lengthy. Um, but of a couple of notes that Commissioner, um, Peterson, um, we ticked off a list of items we wanted to touch and communicate. And as the letter says, these are items we're not sure have been raised previously in the technical committee. Um, but we thought from a local government perspective, we would like to share. And so those are, um, um, funding. Um, so once a local advisory committee is appointed, um, just like in the La Guama, it was appointed in nineteen ninety to develop voluntary action plans and no funding. There was a small budget set aside for a portion of an employee out of the Pendleton Office, but otherwise no funding. And the program continues to, to rely on local implementation, which from a policy standpoint, sounds very good. And, um, indeed, the local community, um, landowners, industry, government officials would know that community best. But without funding, it's just another, uh, unfunded mandate. Um, the second item appoints a lead agency and identifies roles for various state agencies, but it's silent on the matter of local government. So there's some language included in item two that said, when you're appointing this agency, please consider local government and a county in particular because it, on the local level is primarily a county issue. Um, and maybe just as an ex officio member. So we've all seen over the past few years how state agencies and indeed even federal agencies, namely the Environmental Protection Agency, get real involved in policymaking and rules without any direct input of local government. And I know our health director, Robin Kennedy, um, has had a very similar experience, policies made, um, and then were asked to implement them at the local level. And then, um, let's see, where are we? Um, item three just talks about the implementation piece and the need to have funding and staff, dedicated staff for that. Item four identifies various, um, responsibilities of state agencies, um, but excludes the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And, um, the reason I'm, I'm your planning director, right? So that's going to be my focus point. And as at least few of you know, who spent years as a planning commissioner, um, water quality is one of the statewide planning goals. So in my mind, it's important to have DLCD involved in the inter-agency team. Um, we understand from the discussion with the, uh, governor's staff person, Chandra Ferrari, that there was a lot of pushback from some advocacy groups, namely the Home Builders Association for having DLCD at the table. So, excuse me, then, um, I'm sorry, I didn't turn that on. Excuse me. So again, number four just says if, um, please include them at least in the discussion. And I also point out that, um, this is, this will be my swan song issue. Um, a lot of this would not even need to take place if DEQ and Water Resources and Oregon Health Authority followed their state agency coordination program, which is a program that all, most state agencies, forty-some state agencies have a state agency coordination program that's acknowledged by the Land Conservation and Development Commission. It is Oregon's version of NEPA or SEPA, State Environmental Protection Agency. It sets the stage for that. So rather than reinventing the wheel and say, let's have good inter-agency coordination, again, if, um, other agencies and DLCD held them accountable to follow their state agency coordination program, we probably wouldn't be in the situation where we are with the groundwater management area. And I might be oversimplifying that, but, um, I thought it was valuable to at least bring to the attention in the letter. Um, item five, um, I was glad to find something complimentary to share. It would authorize Water Resources Department, um, a regulatory path forward for, um, identifying a, uh, for example, a water right. If, um, as, as a result to remediate, um, contaminated private wells, there was a need to find a water right for a public water system. And with the roadmap project we're working on, that may very well be, um, a tool that we look at in the toolbox at the end of the process. Um, item six, uh, was a note that has, um, what seemed to be pretty severe uh, regulations on feedlots and the governor's staff said, actually, that's not, that hasn't changed. So, um, the way the bill is written and the law is written, it would, um, prohibit new feedlot um, permits from Department of Agriculture if a groundwater management area is declared. It, part of that makes sense, but some of our feedlots are very small. So, um, precluding a very small, um, feedlot um, or a larger feedlot that's sustainably designed and complies with all the regulations might actually improve, um, uh, the groundwater situation. And then number seven, um, I included Commissioner Winholz had had some language he expressed when you met in Irrigan. Um, and hopefully this touches on that a little bit. Um, it would require metering, um, and also O, OWRD's, um, legal authority to go in and check meterings. And there's a yin and a yang for metering, right? So exempt wells have a discreet limit on the water they can use and those aren't checked. So if somebody's irrigating over half acre on their exempt well, or if they're using more than twenty thousand gallons per day, that might be competing with a certificated water right from, say, a farming agency. Um, but I do note that OWRD would require to adopt administrative rules in order to implement that. And, um, I would hope that counties had a seat at that table because it has some, um, potentially pretty, um, onerous, um, impacts to, uh, landowner and property rights. But again, um, if they could design rules that involve the public process and gave the correct safe harbors, it might be a very good thing. So I'm happy to answer questions. Didn't intend to talk so long.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Question?
No questions but comment, and I don't know how, when I print it out to one force to sign, but what's in the packet when I printed it out on the letterhead? The address is obscured by the.
My version, I printed out a different version, um, and it's laid out correctly.
Okay. So then.
Thank you, Valerie.
The, um, number six is section twenty-two, the right section. I couldn't find in section twenty-two where it said anything about. And this is, again, just went off the packet that was given to us, uh, page one seventy-three.
It may have been an earlier version of it.
That's fair. It's been changing all the time.
Uh, in your packet, it would be, um, section twenty-seven. Um, there's section twenty-seven. So it'd be the next page. I don't have, um, so in the version of the bill that's in your packet, a working redlined version, it would be section.
Point seven, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, twenty-seven.
I, um, so we, we have been, uh, reached out to by individuals who, uh, have been in opposition to the bill in its entirety. Uh, and, uh, I, and I think at least, I think maybe all of us have, have signed on as individuals in opposition to this bill because, um, there's just too many negative things for, for us to support it as a whole. But I also might like having this letter too. So, you know, just say, you know, we don't want it to pass, but if it's going to pass, let's, you know, try to get. So that one's JR was talking about yesterday was eleven fifty-three and. That's right. Yeah, I'm sorry, my bad. So that's the one that I think all three of us. That is individually.
That's a different.
Sorry, my bad.
All right, uh, any other questions? Okay, uh, well, thank you, Tamara. And before, uh, we let you go, we'd like to, on behalf of the commissioners and the staff, we'd like to offer condolences on your recent loss. Let you know how they feel.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. You've been a reward. Okay. Moving on is succeed our, our NCPG logo update and.
Do we need to approve? I think that's.
Motion, just a motion for the.
Why would I move for approval of sending in the letter that's a direction to number six to change it to section twenty-seven? Section. Uh, I second that motion.
Move in a second.
Aye, aye.
Okay, I'll go on to the logo update.
So, um, good morning, commissioners. I'm Vince Guerrero, Assistant County Administrator. Um, Stephen and, uh, Transit Services are going through an audit at this moment, so I'm not sure if he's actually on, uh, online. So yes, he prepared, um, a statement that I am going to read. So you'll have to, um, either kick back and relax or if you have questions, uh, please feel free to ask. I don't know if you have, um, a sample of the current logo, but I have, I printed it out if you want to copy. Um, if not, then, uh, you can proceed. So, um, just pretend I'm Stephen and I will read the information that he, uh, provided. So, um, I'm here to propose an update to Morrow County Public Transit Department's logo, an initiative that represents more than just a design change and marks a milestone in our growth, evolution, and renewed commitment to the community we serve. Over the past several months, our department has undergone a remarkable transformation. We began as a modest operation. What began as a modest operation has matured into a dynamic, forward-thinking agency, deeply embedded in the fabric of our community. We've expanded our services, modernized our operations, and strengthened our connection with the people we serve. A clear indicator of this progress is a significant, significant increase in ridership. More people are using our services than ever before, reflection of their growing trust in our department and the value we provide every day. We've worked hard to meet that demand with improved efficiency, enhanced accessibility, and a strong focus on community-centered service. In fact, I wanted to share some great news as a powerful example of that momentum. On Friday, May thirtieth, our Amariel route in Boardman recorded forty-seven boardings, shattering the previous high of twenty-seven. This achievement underscores the positive trajectory we're on and the real impact our work is having in the community. And yet, while our work has advanced, our visual identity remains tied to the past. Our current logo has served with us with distinction and we honor the history and dedication it represents. However, to fully reflect who we are today and who we are coming, it's time for our brand to evolve as well. The new logo we propose will pay homage to the original design through subtle intentional elements that maintain continuity and respect for the department's roots. It will incorporate modern design elements that represent innovation, progress, and a renewed commitment to excellence. And it will serve as a visual signal to the public. And it will serve as a visual signal to the public and our partners that we are not only growing, we are growing better. This logo update is not about change for the sake of aesthetics. It is about alignment. It is about ensuring that our outward identity reflects internal strength, capability, professionalism that now identi- that now define our work. Importantly, I want to share that the majority of the Transit Advisory Committee, the TAC, supports this logo update. They recognize, as we do, that this refreshed identity will better represent the department's evolution and help reinforce the trust and pride our writers and stakeholders have in Moore County Public Transit. I respectfully ask for your support in moving forward with this important step in our department's journey. By embracing a refreshed visual identity, we reaffirm our dedication to serving the community with pride, progress, and purpose.
Well, Stephen, that was very well said.
So um I'm not sure if you have any questions, but there are a few reasons that um he that Stephen also wanted me to highlight. Um, the fresh logo sets a tone for the next chapter of our journey, uh readying us for future growth and moves us away from a the can uh consistent from the consistent changes in structure of our services over the past several years. Um, so I'm not sure if you know, but um a lot of times the Transit Services still gets calls from the community wanting direct services to, let's say, Portland or to Hood River or to other locations. Um, unfortunately, it's we've moved away from that. And because of that, we've uh increased ridership and um and we have continuity now. Uh, because we have set uh times, set locations uh for people to to be aware of uh with those with those rides. So really, technically, they can just go on the on the website, figure out where they want to go uh within Moore County or even um Umatilla County and um and hop a ride. So uh to move on, the logo update uh can mark a turning point. Um, one that invites everyone to be part of a stronger, more unified for future. The the new logo offers opportunities, standardized and unified branding across all departments and materials. Um, the other mention that he wanted um me to say was energ- it energizes staff and community and can boost uh county engagement. When people see a refreshed, thoughtful logo out in the community enhances the pride in local services and infrastructure. And there's just a few more things he wanted to wanted me to mention. But I'm not sure if you have any questions or any reservations with the logo change. But um I really do think it's a a very nice logo, reflects um. It has um some aspects of of the loop tied into it, um but also projects us forward for for the future.
Any questions? Vince?
Well, I'll say is that I think that it's great to get the public transit in there because I think that one, I don't know how well known the loop was known as a brand per se. I think that there's still a lot of people that were thinking of it when it was still the Moore County Special Transportation Program. And you had to be a senior disabled. So I think that was one of the things that helped hold it back is people weren't aware that they were able to use that service. So I think that having the public transit is a very good thing in it. Should open it up to make awareness. That anybody can use it. I guess the one comment that's maybe negative is question is why the Oregon? I mean, we have M C P T, you know, so I would say Moore County Public Transit.
So that was also brought up during the meeting as well. I brought I I brought it up because of the fact that it said Moore County Public Transit, but if you Google Moore County Public Transit, there's another Moore County within the United States. And so, yes, and so we didn't want it to be. We didn't want there to be any confusion, but that portion itself can actually be removed. So when we set out, sent out in um advertisements, the Moore County Public Transit doesn't, Oregon doesn't need to be there. It can just say M C P T.
And we've got the sites, the buses.
So yeah, yeah, exactly. So.
On the bus, we're not gonna. But Oregon.
Yeah. We're we're obviously in Oregon, so when the bus travels around. No one's gonna say, what's that bus from my um Ohio doing here? So. So um it's it's made to be removed and put back on, but it was there to indicate that we are Oregon. Um, so. And I'm pretty sure Ohio's flat. Just to say.
Well, uh, I I really appreciate all of the work that has been done at um Moore County Public Transit. And I think this is a really, I I agree with what you said, Stephen. Um, um, this is an opportunity to really highlight that uh this is something different moving forward and to look at it as something that is different, not just what we have assumed it to be in the past.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, I have somebody um.
So I guess, since there's nothing written, I guess I would um. If authorize staff to move.
There is something, there is something.
Yeah. About we authorize staff to move forward with them.
I second that motion.
We move and second for the discussions. All the bears.
Aye.
Thank you.
Before you leave, I'd like to make just one quick comment. You should have touched on services and I have to tell you, you guys are doing a really good job getting out and letting the people know what you're doing. And I know you, I know services changed, but the level of your uh interaction I've had with the public has come way down since you've started. A lot of it is just telling them, this is what we offer, you know, we have changes. Just letting them know what uh what's going on, how has this changed from previous, you know? And that's really reduced um what I've heard from the public. So I think you're doing a good job in that sense.
Yeah, the main goal is for transit um um services to get out to the public to let them know what's going on, how to even ride the bus. They provide training. We're doing advertising over the radio and um in addition to um to social media. So um, yeah, we're we're moving forward and we'll be uh ma- doing additional advertising once um our new um Community Services Administrative Assistant comes on board. So um she'll start next week, and then once she starts next week, we'll start doing additional advertising uh in conjunction with Transit Services as well as other departments. Including the fishing jerky.
Just to let you know, I heard one of the video advertisements on this last week.
Yeah, yeah. Cool. So they've been going on for a few months now, and I think our uh campaign will go through um up to July, if I remember correctly.
Radio station do I need to do this?
One I heard on was probably maybe two point one.
Okay, yeah, it's Elcorn, Elcorn Media. We did advertising, I think, over two stations. They have like a conglomerate of five stations. We chose two.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Duncan.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is a. Thirty-four thousand one option.
Yeah, and then let me just give an opportunity to unmute and uh invite his nineteen. Okay. And is Lori still on or is she?
Lori had to jump off.
Okay, Kelly, uh, are you prepared to share screen or should I share screen?
Um, here, let me try it out. I think it should work.
Okay. So um. Great, it's behind you.
One sec.
Um, but we can swap that. Now it's now it's there. Okay, um, so um, I'm gonna turn the time over to Kelly and our design team, but I just wanted to kind of get a preface, uh, a short preface of it. We're at that point with the design uh where on the eighteenth of this month, we will be bringing and showing you everything that's going through. Uh, we're having an intense uh sit down tomorrow to finalize some of the else of that, but we're really getting to the point where we have the design for what it is. And uh, but one of the things that we have is the exterior facade of the building. And that's pretty uh community reflective. And so um I told Chair Sykes that I have no problems moving walls and designating offices, but when it talks about what it's gonna look like for the community as a look as a whole, we wanted to bring that before you, and it does change some of the design parameters. And so we needed it, we needed to do it now before the uh before we had city of, yes. And so with that, um, Kelly, we'll turn it over to you if that's a good enough preamble for you.
Yeah, it's great. Thank you, Matt. Good morning, commissioners. Um, so the facade is what we're calling this, the exterior of the building. And we have some options that we're gonna show you, but we don't. I'm gonna preface that we're not asking for you to select an option. It's studying different ways the building can look, using different components, different material palettes. Um, and just different ways to shape things and uh welcome people to the building. And so we really just want your feedback regarding the the different things you see in these options that seem most appropriate to the project. We're gonna focus specifically on the uh the gable on the west, if you remember the uh layout of the building. Um, these twin gables, they're very symmetrical. And the one on the west is the one where the main entry will be, so we want to lead people to the main entry. As the one that has the courtroom in it, so iconically, it should be the more prominent one. And so we're focusing our study just on this one for today because we want how this one looks to be decided first so that it can become the precedent for how the rest of the building looks. And with that, I'll go through uh what the main difference between these options are that you'll see the one that we're calling Option A has a framed entry, sort of like a portal that you would enter through. Um, the second one called Shaded Breezeway would have maybe like a pergola connecting the entry to where the parking is. And the third option, we would extend the roof structure out, making um it more prominent at the at the higher level, also creating maybe a more grand sense of like a civic important building would want to have. And we have some renderings of these, and as I go through the renderings, I'll talk about some specific differences that you'll see in these options. So the um, this particular option um has a two-story-high precast concrete portal that extends out from the face. It provides um a more solid overhead shelter from rain and snow at the building entrance. And there's another view of it. Uh, the pergola option wouldn't be as solid. It would be more of a shaded louvered structure that filters the sunlight in. And it would only be a single story, so it'd be maybe more at the human scale of an entrance compared to this. The next one, I'm oh, sorry, here's the rendering for the pergola option. And another view of it, so it's more of a human-scale, single-story structure uh versus the next one that's more of a double-height structure. The deeper eve on the one side contrasts with the shallower eve on the other side, identifying this as the side where you would enter through. And this would also be a more solid overhang rather than something perforated. So that's something we've been talking a lot about is when people are queuing up and waiting to enter in this building, knowing that the weather um here is pretty arid. Do we need to be thinking more about snow, rain, or sun and what feels appropriate for that? Um, then let's see, materials, we'll talk about two. You'll see different materials throughout these.
Real quick, I I guess we'll go back to the other one. Um, you'll notice on each of these options that the entrance is sort of justified to the right on this gable. Um, the reason is is that um, yeah, the sort of solid wall to the left is a sheer wall, and so we need that for structural.
Oh, correct. Yeah, Matt picked up on that. He's like, maybe some signage can go over here, and so we'll show you some signage options too. Yeah, you can see this, the blank wall in all three of these options, consistent where the signage is. Um, so the materiality, um, we're looking at using masonry. It's a traditional durable material. Uh, we're looking at different um ways that we could use brick, either modular-sized, longer or really long, ranging from eight inches to two feet, using natural lighter tones for the most part. Um, and then also using corbeling, like you see in this picture here, or recessing and different ways you can layer brick to create more depth. We're looking at precast concrete forms, also really durable and can be stained in a variety of colors, made into all sorts of custom shapes and profiles. You'll see this one mostly in that framed entry option. Uh, wood, so we're using a lot of wood right now, or proposing to use a lot of wood right now for our interior finishes around public spaces. And so bringing that wood out also into the exterior, we could do that strategically in areas where um we can still have the wood, of course, be um like lower maintenance, not a lot of wood. Um, you'll see it in the extended roof option, um where you can see this gable roof here, the structure that you see here is blue lamb beams, and it'd be the same blue lamb beams that you would see in the courtroom in the interior space. We're planning to have exposed blue lamb beams. So you can kind of see um the repetition of those glue lamp beams from the exterior all the way through the interior. And then the pergola option um could be like a wood pergola, or we're showing wood louvers and grills over south-facing windows because that would help to filter the daylight into public spaces, which is important to try to do because um these public spaces are less likely to have someone who's always going around pulling down shades when it gets bright out to reduce glare. And then let's see roofing. Right now, we're um studying either doing standing seam metal roof or a slate roof, standing seam metal roof. We're probably gonna have to have solar panels on the roof, so it's easy to attach solar panels to these. Slate roof is really long-lasting and quite durable. Um.
Sign comparable in cost. Should.
It sounds like it should be, yeah. Um, the building signage options, maybe something on a site wall because there's gonna be a lot of retaining walls on our sloped sites or um maybe on the pergola or maybe on the side here where we have the the structural wall that we're not able to put openings in anyways. Um, so I think that's, that's a big, a quick summary of all the materials and the questions. Just to to jog your uh responses, things we're looking for are what elements are appropriate because they're reminiscent of the local culture or landscape? Or what elements are appropriate because they identify this building as a civic building? Or what elements are appropriate because they help the building fit in with being in a residential neighborhood? So I'll leave it on this view and let me know if you want me to go back to any other views or have any comments.
I just have a comment and a question, I guess. When this building here, we're in this build, uh, we asked the designers if they should somehow kind of tie the look to the original courthouse. You know, I mean, they actually looked at putting a bunch of original basalt in here, but that was not feasible, of course. But is there something along with the colors or just something to to kind of make it look like it's a Moore County building, you know? I'm I'm not not vague, like not redo the whole thing, but just, you know, maybe maybe a brick style, a wall, a color, something that looks like the blue basalt, something along that lines. There's something you could do to to do that, kind of tie them all together.
That was sort of the intent with the uh the slate rock application a little bit. It sort of resembles basalt rock a little bit. It's not as local. Um, it's here in the U S, but it's not as local to uh as basalt rock would be.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
No, I just. No, I just just something to kind of stay within that look, you know, so that it I hope you understand what I mean, you know, not 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 to match exactly, but just anyway. And then I guess my second comment was as far as the preference for the outside is, and I don't know if they're going to be doing it, but I seen when they have juror selection. Um, I don't know if the jurors are going to show are going to have to be outside or if they let them in. But uh I've seen quite a few jurors out in front of this office here uh before they get let in in the morning for jury selection. So I prefer someplace if there is, I I don't even know if that's going to be the case or if they're all going to be let inside. But that that would be just something that I would, I would think should be taken into account.
That's a good thing for us to talk about in our meeting tomorrow. We'll have the trial court administrator there who can confirm that. Um, something also you're not seeing is the other gable, which will be more offices. And so I think you'll see that that gable is going to take shape a lot differently than this one and have more punched window openings. And so um the facade of your existing courthouse is a majority of those smaller punched windows. So there might be an opportunity there to remind people of that building through how we do those windows. I think the precast shapes too could give us some flexibility, some customization to create um something that's at the scale of the basalt blocks, since brick obviously can't do that. Uh, the corbeling too adds a lot of texture that can help give you that rougher look, that more monolithic look that the basalt has. Um, but we definitely take that comment to heart about matching the existing building in our next iteration.
Yeah, yeah, I guess I dive into that a little bit more. I guess what about the existing building? Um, you know, makes it a moral county building. Um, with these iterations, we are, we are hesitant to sort of take too much precedent in the historic building, um, because we know that the historic building is sort of the icon of More County and uh we didn't we're a little hesitant to do something that uh matched it too quickly or too much, I suppose, to uh because we didn't want to take away from the icon, you know, it's it's sort of its own separate building.
We're kind of doing an inverse of it because the mate, the existing building is very symmetrical with a higher peak in the middle. And so we have still a very symmetrical building, but it's the opposite in that it's more about the two wings with a gap in the middle rather than the clock tower.
I think I would uh agree with Chair Sykes. I would like to see it uh if we could have it, you know, the the brick or whatever it is that we end up going with be a little darker so that it matched that basalt. Uh, I think it would be really awesome if our county buildings going forward, if if you could walk up to any county building and say, yeah, that's county building, looks like courthouse. I know I know where the county buildings are as we are going into the future. Uh, and then for the entryways, I I like the extended roof. I think it it makes it feel a little bit more like a civic building uh than the other options, uh while also I think in a way making it seem a little bit more like a house and it'll fit in slightly better residential at the same time. That's my thought.
Great. I'm writing this down.
This is your comments, Joe?
Well, I guess I just always think of dollars and cents.
Uh huh, that's fair.
And um, so I think like the, I think it's important that whatever design, you know, it's going to fit within the budget. And I look at long term. I agree with you guys. I like the look of the extended roof with the maintenance of the wood and stuff. Is a concern to me. And then, you know, when we had the different level layers of brick, whether it extends out or you have pockets, just seems like because we live in a dirty, dusty you know, I mean, there's lots of dust in the air. It seems like a great place for stuff to catch. And so it means lots of pressure washing. So there's lots of maintenance going forward on that. And so, you know, a pre precast, you know, concrete and you know, like they said, you can dye the concrete so you can get the coloring close to where some of our existing buildings are. I guess those would be my preferences, the things to keep in mind. You know, initial construction costs and ongoing maintenance and claiming and whatever.
Okay, any other comments or?
The the design team did not say so, but part of the color theme, the wood look is supposed to uh, I guess, be a moral county thing in that guys have a lot of wheat fields, uh natural wood, something we're trying to make that fit that way, look wise. So it was moral county, doesn't say rural county.
Didn't like this, doesn't belong in downtown. Home County or, yeah, Portland or something, yeah. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, well, I want to thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
So gave you some good thoughts that you want. So. All right. We have the action.
No, I think that was just a little information.
Okay, my next up with the our deflection contract, you know, fixed solution, sole source determination. Dustin, he's not available, right?
He's in court action and asked that I uh that I take on the inflection of this issue. Um, what what happened, uh, why this is before the Board of Commissioners today is uh that the deflection contract that was set up uh between Marl County and Community Counseling Solutions in December twenty twenty four uh was brought before the B O C was done through a negotiated process, but did not uh did not follow our procurement process. And the issue is, is uh the idea behind it at the time was this was an extension of services that was provided by CCS. Um, and so that it was presented to the board as almost like just an an expansion of it, but quite literally, it's a separate contract. And so it should have went through a separate full procurement process or been designated as a sole source uh procurement process. Um, we've been in it so you know, six months and um we're getting uh ready for processing invoices and such. And uh in order to correct this, uh we would like to kind of go back retroactively stated as a sole source provider. That was the intent of it. But the issue is, is we did not take that specific action and did not post it for uh uh for any protest periods. Um, we would ask that uh uh that the B O C designated as a sole source provision and allow us to do that. That way we can process any invoices that come in before the end of the year. Uh, as right now, the invoices have not been uh forth. We do know that there's been services provided. Uh, the service year ends June thirtieth of twenty twenty five. And so, uh, or yes, June thirtieth. And so we anticipate invoices coming in and we don't want to have to hold them and and cause any delay at most. So with that, we would ask the uh, the Board of Commissioners to um uh, as it as it's as read in the cover letter and is prepared by our county council.
Any questions, Matt?
So on page one eighty-eight. It's a little paragraph into the first. So words in the sentence, do so, it should be within seven days.
Within, okay.
And then the next sentence seems repetitive for the most part.
Sorry, what was that, Jeff?
It, the second sentence for the first part is repetitive with the first, in my opinion. I think that's legal. I think a lot of things are.
We will, we will uh correct the typo and we'll just double check with counsel before we post this. Because most, most sentences are saying within seven days.
Yep.
Got any other comments? Uh, do you hear motion to adopt with those corrections? We got a motion, we got a, we got a suggested motion.
I move to adopt the findings of fact and analysis in the May thirtieth, twenty twenty five sole source memo from County Council and authorize a sole source procurement contract with Community Counseling Solutions. County staff are directed to post public notice as required by the Oregon revised statute to present a proposed contract for consideration by the Marl County Board of Commissioners.
Including corrections.
Including corrections.
Second.
Okay, let move the second and uh any further discussion, all in favor?
I, I.
Very. It actually includes a business. Uh, so Dave.
They did. And I guess I don't know how to handle this because this will have been in the consent agenda when it was the contracts, I believe, dealing with the hot mix stuff. I found some typos, some errors, things that maybe should be corrected.
Okay.
Um, so I don't want to, if they don't substantively change the contract, if you'd like to provide those, we can, we can get those. The the only one that would maybe be substantive was on one for granite. On what we are signing, it did not list the name in the contract, their address and their federal tax ID, but the one for American products had those all in there that he signed. Yes, so that one is maybe more substantive.
Oh, okay, oh.
No, maybe well Valerie has their first to sign, has that? Do it be page seventy-eight of that.
So want to leave the contract and then sign a later date, those corrections have been made.
I'll look them back to see it. Now he wants to handle this.
Well, we approved it, the consent.
You know, no, no.
Um, so if we needed to make a change in the motion, since it's been approved, we would need to have a motion to rescind the approval to pull that out. Um, since it was approved as consent agenda, we'd pull that out, uh rescind the uh the motion to approve the consent agenda, pull out C. And if you wanted to change where uh where it's, if it's uh the Board of Commission signing it, or if you'd like this corrections. And I can double check with Jeff before, uh, to make sure the corrections are done and authorize me to sign it. So I can do it uh sometime the next day or two as we get that taken care of.
No, all right, okay.
So.
Okay, we need to rescind the motion.
Yes.
Okay.
Rescind the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Right, then, now there's a person that made the motion, they have to rescind it, right?
General.
Who made the motion to the consent agenda?
Uh, Commissioner Peterson.
And then we would pull out C. Approve it, have a motion to approve the consent agenda without C and then have a motion to approve C with uh an authorized county manager or county administrator to sign it uh based on uh providing corrections uh.
Yeah.
So we're gonna.
I got it, yes.
Number one, the hill is your motion from Commissioner Peterson to rescind the motion.
I uh I will rescind my motion to approve of the consent agenda now and second.
Okay, do I hear a motion to uh pull out?
So we need to.
To approve the consent agenda, the soul pull out with that item pulls out.
Which we need to vote on.
Oh, yeah, okay. Got a move, a motion and second. Um, any further discussion, all in favor?
I.
All opposed, motion carried. Okay, now do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda without the contract with the uh.
So I'll see. Move to approve the consent agenda, pull now, I can see.
My second.
Okay, move the second and to approve the consent agenda, let's say, see, any further discussion, all in favor?
I.
I. All opposed, motion carried. Okay, Matt.
Yeah, so.
Wind it back, give us a.
So now the uh the motion would be to approve the level three hot mix asphalt contract awarding with updates of of contracted uh information. Authorize the county administrator to sign once corrections are made.
I so moved second.
We move the second for the discussion, all in favor?
I, I.
All opposed, motion carried.
Sorry, guys, for not pitching this earlier. It's okay, I forgive you. I had it here, but there's one thing I wasn't thinking it was in the.
Yeah, well, that's fine. That's good. Um. What are the ones that put on the? And we got a number of that. Uh, the ones where I just signed, I'd feel a lot more careful than what I in a basic jail cell. Uh, okay. Next up, the correspondence.
No, of course, a lot of this one, straight to the commissioners and boards when I start.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, nothing comes to mind right now. I mean, all three of us were on the Zoom call today with J R and some other people. Let's flesh in the dream. On that, how much?
Okay, I don't think I have anything. Report.
Nothing for me.
Okay. Okay, well, first, before we go into executive session. Oh, I'm bringing back the word right now. I'm wanting to go into executive session under orders one nine two dash six six zero two H to consult council concerning the legal rights and duties of public public regarding current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Members of the press may attend, but may not disclose the discussion still in session. So with that, we will hold. There will not be any potential decision right now.
Maybe.
Okay, there may be a potential decision or action after we come out of executive session. So. Okay, we're coming out of executive session back into open session. And uh we have a motion to entertain.
Okay.
Uh, I moved cancel the public hearing on June eleventh regarding uh the C D A properties annexation into uh Boardman Fire Rescue District.
Second.
You moved the second, any further discussion, all in favor?
I.
All opposed, motion carried. Okay.
We got, I have another motion to go with it.
Oh, you said, yeah, that's okay.
Uh, and then I moved to direct county administration to work with the C D A on a date or extension for the hearing.
Second, we moved the second and further discussion, all in favor?
I.
I. Close, she carried. Okay. Okay, another business before before the commission today.
Been a while since we had a sub-two-hour meetings.
Yeah, good. That is still on the desk. Okay. All the meeting, the jury, amen. We have just so the public probably up here, but uh we do have a work session, one for, correct?
Yes.
You're a worker.
Good job.